between
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Man, till we got a rope.
Ms. Davis. Mr. Saint Columbia. Dr. Miller. Mr. Messina. Mr. Athalie.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
One absent, five present.
Hello, my name is Ben Smith. I'm representing Block Ops Mining. We're a Bitcoin mining company out of, we're based out of Austin, Texas. We have sites in Russellville and Moreland, and we operate sites in Walnut Ridge, Pleasant Plains, and Cabot right now. We're expanding our operations to the eastern side of the state. Helena will be our first if we do get the approval to to open up our eastern district along with a few other cities that we're working in. So what we do is essentially like a data center. So we are looking to renovate the old Dragon Lumber Yard over on Washington Street. We already have a letter and ten and contract ready with them to purchase the entire hundred and sixty-eight acres with those two buildings on it. And turn that into a data center. We've already met that there is enough power there for us. And we just wanted to come here today and seek y'all's approval for bringing this business to to the city. And I'll go through the slide quick slideshow, kind of explaining what Bitcoin is, because most people don't know what that is. And kind of go through some revenue and stuff like that for y'all. So we'll start off of what Bitcoin is. Bitcoin, you can think of it as a processing means of exchange of money or a commodity. So what our facilities do is we process those exchanges or those transactions, just like Visa or MasterCard. We actually process more dollar value than Visa or MasterCard combined annually across our network. So it's just simply a way to takes a medium of exchange across the internet. And it's outside the financial M2 money supply of our Federal Reserve system. So our Federal Reserve and our government can just rent money as they want fiat. And Bitcoin, there will only ever be twenty-one million Bitcoin ever made. The last one will be in twenty-one. So it kind of keeps the store value like some people call it like digital gold. That's the way people are using it. Alright, so here is two of our sites. This is our Russellville facility, and this is our Moreland facility. As you can see, this would be more along the lines of what we would do here in Helena is renovate that building, one of those buildings out there, that furthest one to the road into a facility like this. This would be equivalent in the size of power capacity, because power is kind of the name of the game for us. We just have to, we consume the computers in data center. They consume a lot of power. One side has an opening for the heat exhaust to come out, which it will be enclosed with fans. And then the other side has a filtration system across it that's completely enclosed also. And then this up there is Moreland, which is just north of Russellville. We use containers at that location. So noise is always a problem with our industry. We, I'm president of the Blockchain Council here in the state. I worked with state legislators back in April, and we wrote two laws, one pertaining to noise issues, and that kind of gave our industry a legal framework to work in of like how we should operate, just like any other business. We, there was never any understanding. It was kind of the Wild West up until then, and there was no rules. So we sat down and wanted to legitimize our industry. So we thought maybe sitting with particular legislators down in Little Rock and getting a few bills passed, that way we can have that structure and framework for our industry moving forward. The reason I said that Moreland is a hundred, I think it's like a hun- it's a little bit. I think it's like a hundred and thirty-five feet to a church. So from our property line to the front doors of a church, literally across the street. And they still hold service on Sundays and Wednesdays, no problem, because we mitigate our noise with different sound walls, etc. And we have a, we will always present a pre-construction sound study and a post-construction sound study. And we'll adhere to that via the law Act 173, which we helped write. So what does like, what's the benefits for the city? So all of our, we measure everything in how much power we consume. So there is a few, a few things. One, you would get your, your power tax, I mean, yeah, your sales tax from the power cells, which is roughly what we would show here. So a comparable size facility is Russellville. So it's actually one megawatt smaller than what Helena would be. So we would start off, day one, we would hire three employees, and we always hire local guys. Like, and as we scale up the business and get to where we're getting in more and more of the miners, we would max out at eight employees. Moreland and Russellville are literally like ten miles apart. That's why we, we have it separated like that. But for a standalone facility, kind of off by itself, we would need eight total employees at that, working seven days a week. Average salary, we would start at like fifty, but we also offer fifty thousand, but we offer off some benefits. We give them miners to, so they can participate in the business. And then insurance and managers, we give them a vehicle, etc., which brings it up to about an average pay sixty thousand dollars when you factor in the miners and the revenue from the miners. The initial investment in the infrastructure is two million dollars. So we would invest two million dollars into upgrading, purchasing and upgrading the facility there. And then on top of that, the actual computers that go in there would be roughly ten and a half million dollar investment into it. So about a thirteen million dollar investment, give or take, when it's said and done. This, like I said, this is on the cell tax, so the city revenue on our power cell alone is a hundred and five thousand dollars tax revenue that on the sale of our power. But then we have use case taxes and sales tax, because we sell the computers to individuals. Therefore, you know, you would get that, that sales tax on those computers also. Our industry, the price of them are constantly fluctuating, because it's based on how much Bitcoin or how much cash revenue it makes in a year. So as the volatility of Bitcoin goes, the, the computer volatility pricing also plays a role. So it's kind of hard to calculate that. So back to the distancing, so our closest residents, we're three hundred and fifty feet away. As you can see, we, in Russellville, we are three hundred foot away and a hundred and fifty foot away. This facility's been running for two years. We've never had a complaint about noise or anything with us. And then more, we've been running June with also no complaints. Yeah, so here's kind of what the Russellville structure looks like, and it would be pretty much similar to what we do out here. We would just renovate the build, the existing building. This, this side is our, this side is the intake wall with louvers on it. So the louvers damping, damper down the, the sound essentially. And it creates the airflow that is needed to cool these computers. And this side is the exhaust, and it also has louvers on it to, as you can see, this kind of, too hard to say, but right there, that's what I started putting those louvers in. And it has since filled out all the way across. So here is where, where the site is. It's a hundred and sixteen acres. It's own industrial already. We would be, we've met with Entergy a couple of times with their engineers on what we would have to do to upgrade the lines and the facility of the substation. So they would come in. Here is Washington Street here. We would, they would introduce stocks at this point, and then we take over, and we build out all the electrical infrastructure on the back end. We said we own the transformers. We have to own everything. And then our building here, and as you can see, we would exhaust our heat this way. And we would build our sound retention wall along the Washington, that east side of the road there. So like here's Russellville. Here's a example of the sound study that we had. We had to get a special use permit for it. There wasn't really any at the time. There was no, like I said, there was no rules for the industry, so they like, I think we should just do it just to cover ourselves. And then Moreland, they have a noise ordinance. Again, this is the noise ordinance that we worked with at the state level and helped get in place and created as an industry standard. As you can see, here's the sound retention wall that long, that runs along that road right there. And then, Marion was on here. Yep, so Marion, here is, here's the one that we're, we're doing in Marion. We got our special use permit. No, excuse me, we didn't have to get special use permit. We got our permits back in December, and we started construction on our Marion facility too. So kind of it will be the same thing, but we would like to do it here in Helena. If y'all have any questions, I'm sure y'all have some. I'll be happy to answer. Yep.
You said hopefully you would hire about seven new Helena employees.
Three.
Yeah, three initially, and then five more after that. Yes, sir. Yep.
How much is total employment of your business?
Eight, eight employees. Eight total employees per this site.
So you're not bringing in any other people?
No, we would hire locally, and there's no, no education. It's all on the job, just high school diploma type guys. Or people.
So the total number of employment would be eight people?
Yes, sir. Eight people.
Do you operate twenty-four seven? Is that
Yes, sir.
So noise would be at twenty-four seven?
Yes, sir. So there is, yep. So the state ordinance is sixty decibels during daylight hours and fifty-five decibels at, at night. For instance, fifty-five decibels is standing outside in nature. That is normal sound. Sixty decibels is me and you talking at about three feet from each other. So we, we have always achieved that, even like I was saying, at our Moreland location, where it's a hundred and fifty foot to the front door of the church. We, we achieve the fifty-five decibels all year round.
Does your company use any AI or artificial intelligence?
No, sir. We, so we can change out our, our computer infrastructure to, to do that, to do AI rendering, etc. The market is not there right now for that, but we do have a branch that does AI. Yes, sir. They can do it.
Which branch uses AI?
It's in our testing facility in Walnut Ridge. Yep.
Mr. Smith, would you also go through how long would it take to construct and how, how soon you want to be in business?
So we met with Entergy last week, and I spoke to the engineers today. They will, their lead time is sixty days on their side of the buildout. If we can get permits in place, this construction from start to finish would probably take us three to four weeks to complete. So we would be waiting on energy to energize this more than likely. So how it works is Entergy does not make any more power for us. We have, we have to go around and put in studies to find where there's excess power that's not being used. We have found that Helena has about eight megawatt, well, they have more than eight, but they are allotting us eight megawatts of power. And they always create a buffer for economic development, etc. And out of that substation. So what we have to do, we'll have about a half a million dollar investment into the substation that will upgrade that substation with all their parts and all the lines from that substation, beating down that main highway strip there, and then over to us. If something happens to us and we go out of business in a year, we don't get to take that. That infrastructure remains in that substation, and therefore it's a benefit, net benefit to the city, because you could bring in more you know, more business, because that electrical use is there. During times of high demand, we are contractually obligated to shut down our facility. So in the heat, yeah, in the heat of summer or when it's really cold, like a couple of weeks ago, when it was so cold, we shut down three times that week. And we have peak hour intervals that we do it. Like, we shut down from seven to eleven during the winter normally. And then in the evening time, we'll shut down from like two to seven. It's usually four to five hour increments. Because we're considered what's base load centers, you can't ask a steel facility to shut down their smelting processes to, to feed back that power to the, to the local community. But we are happy to do it, and we can do it, because it's so automated and it's just a few flicks of a switch. And we've essentially fed back that eight megawatts of power to, to the community that is needed. And then we consume it when there isn't a need for it. And that, that, you know, generates revenue for Entergy, obviously, and then your local and state municipalities.
What's, what's the revenue we generated by your company for the city?
Yep, so we would, about a hundred and five thousand dollars on the power sales of it. And then, of course, property taxes would be in it, but also sales and use tax. So for instance, one of these computers, if we sold it, so anybody can take part in this. So usually how, what we do is we'll take half the facility for ourselves. And we'll lose the half for ourselves. And then we would use the other half of the infrastructure, and anybody can purchase a computer and put it there and create that revenue. So the sale of those computers right there, say one of those computers are three grand right now. You would get the sales tax on those computers. So that is roughly twenty-nine hundred slots or so in there is what it would be. And so, I mean, the math on even half of that is, is pretty substantial. And then, of course, you get the use tax on that at the end of the year too.
So you calculate a hundred and five thousand, was that based on one percent or two percent tax?
Uh, I think we done it at the one percent. Yeah, whatever the cities was at, it was one percent. That's on the power alone. It's kind of, like I was saying, it's kind of hard to exactly give you the power say, or the sales use. So we always use the, the power as a base, because I can tell you how much power I'm going to use twenty-four seven. So, yeah.
Do you work with our colleague here in any way?
Uh, not, no. Yeah, not yet. Like to. That's a, you know, that's another venture that we would try to do on the Blockchain Council side, not exactly our state. We also have a nonprofit that, that helps us, that we do things with. So. Any other questions?
Now, here's your own construction, I, I would see.
Yep. Yep, so my partner is a contractor, an electrician and lineman. We kind of own everything under Block Ops. We have two separate entities, basically. Block Ops, which kind of holds the real estate. And then we have Block Strategies, which holds the operations side and the construction side and all that. So my partner, we have three partners under that Block Strategies. It's myself, a man named Stephen Watson out of Perrigold, and Ricky Garcia, who owns Block Ops, and he's out of Austin, Texas. And like I said, we do all the, everything, you know, through that entity. Thank you. We're trying. We, we've been working hard. We've been operating for like three years now. I was the first one in the state to do it. I'm, I'm from Marion, born and, well, not born, raised, my dad was in Marine Corps. Yep, yep, my dad was in Marine Corps, so we were out in San Diego for a while, but went to school at Marion, graduated Marion. I was a fireman at Memphis, West Memphis, started out at West Memphis, went to Memphis as a firefighter, paramedic. Twenty nineteen, started YouTube and like, how do I make some more money? Taught myself everything I know about electrical engineering, construction, computer work, everything from YouTube, from YouTube University. And here I am today. So I live in Jonesboro now. My wife's a nurse practitioner up there, so at St. Bernard, so that's why we live there. She's from Marianna. Yeah, and she's from Marianna, so we come down to Marianna all the time. In Jonesboro. I live in Jonesboro. Yep, yep, we would hire everybody local from the community. Yep, yep, no.
Is everybody going to run this plant for you? Will be local people?
Look, yep, nobody from the outside. So like Cabot, we hired our guys out of Cabot, Pleasant Plains, out of Ca- Pleasant Plains. Russellville and Moreland out of Russellville. And then Marion will be out of Marion, and then Helena will be Helena. Yeah.
Anybody have any more questions?
When you're in full operation, what kind of revenue at the end of the year can, can the city of Helena, West Town look forward?
Yep, so I would refer that to Russellville. Like I said, Russellville's slightly smaller, but last year's revenue was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars total tax revenue between property tax, sales tax, use tax, and the power tax. Again, that, that, the power tax, I can tell you for sure, and then because I know exactly how much power I'm going to use. The fluctuation in the price of, of the computer sales is, is the one that's hard to target, but similar as last year.
All right, the power tax will be how much?
Hundred and five thousand.
To the city of Helena?
To the city of Helena, I guess, sir. Yep. Yes, sir. So any other questions? No. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, as, as relates to your application, Mr. Woodruff has looked over it. And the city's going to approve it this week. We wanted you to inform the councils, they'll know what's going on. It doesn't have to go both plant commission, narrative, zoned industrial. And we've, we've looked at your information, and we just want to finish it. We would do, and you do the building permit and pay the fees for the building permit, and, and we'll go from there.
Alright.
But I meant, Mr. Woodruff's again today, and we'll, we'll get the process finished this week.
Perfect, yeah, we look forward to it.
And I just want to say, thank you for, for looking at Helena. We need more people like you looking at Helena, trying to invest in Helena. And whatever we can do to make your business successful, we intend to do that. But just, first of all, just thank you for choosing Helena.
Yep, and like I was telling Mr. Valley over the last few weeks, I'm a Delta boy, you know, I was raised here too. I know our struggles on our side of the state. I go to Little Rock, I go to Northwest Arkansas all the time. And I see they have all the best things in the world over there, right? And then I'm like, man, why can't we have that back at home? So one, doing it in Marion, that's a good city. That feels great to me, but also moving into the Delta is, you know, is kind of holds a special place to me there to be able to get back to, to my people on my side of the state. So, and I appreciate y'all letting us have this. So, and I appreciate y'all letting us have this.
And Mr. Smith, we appreciate you, especially your desire to come down and explain it to the council and to the public, what the facility is. And take an extra step and, and.
And I'm always, always open for any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Whenever we get it going, y'all can come hang out and check it out.
We'll be there, we'll be there for grab break.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the administration and city council and the general public. The first item on the agenda is the citizen participation. Are we doing that tonight?
Um, I'm still interested in looking at that. If we could just iron out the specifics, I'd still like to do that.
So that's something to come back to, okay. And what I do, unless you tell me differently, I just keep putting it on the agenda until we resolve the, the issue. The, the next item is a food truck festival permit. It's found at page twenty two through twenty five. This one I don't believe Chief Bell has signed off on. We, we do.
I spoke to him about it.
Okay, well, the copy in the, in the packet didn't have it seen.
Yes, sir.
And this is a festival, May the thirty first, which would be, seems like around Memorial Day holiday. Food truck festival on the river. My contact Marcus West, who's originally from Helena, but his address is in Bryan, Arkansas. It's going to occur at the Helena River Park. And it's open to the public from ten AM to ten PM one day. There's probably going to be some other things taking place over there. And so they're asking at this point for the city council to approve the event permit. For them to use the river park.
Is there a motion to Marcus West to permit for the thirty first at the River Park? Yes, sir, Ms. Davis moved to approve the event. Second, Mr. Etherly second's the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll please?
Ms. Miller? Pardon? Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Davis? Five yes?
All right. We're trying to pick two of the agenda. Item number three at the very bottom of, of the agenda says Delta Circle, June seventeenth. It's for the next council meeting, I don't know if anybody has seen it for the Delta Circles. Okay. And so what I tried to do is put in this section, things that we have, but they're not necessarily for you to deal with tonight. All right, next we have Mr. Joseph Whitfield. He's with the Chamber of Commerce and Delta Magic, and I don't know which capacity he's coming tonight, but he did ask to appear.
I'm calling you now.
I'm sorry.
Your brother called me, I was. Evening, everybody. I'm here today on behalf of Dr. Philip Lockhart Foundation. It's a foundation that was started in memory to honor the legacy of Dr. Lockhart, Philip Lockhart. He was a former teacher and coach, principal at Kib Delta Fleeja High. And so the foundation serves multiple purposes. They do scholarships for high school students across the country now. And then particularly here in Helena, West Helena, because this is the community that he served. They have done, this will be the third year that they're hoping to do an annual fundraiser, which is generally a five K. It's the same route that the Flower Power Run does for the Blues Fest, starts on Cherry Street, goes to the River Park. It kind of comes back around downtown through Walnut Street before stopping at the stage. So the, the request tonight is, on behalf of the foundation, we're just seeking a permit to do that five K foundation. That five K community event where it serves as a fundraiser for the foundation. And as well, we're also just hoping to see a couple of people from our fire department there. Maybe the police department, just for safety and logistical purposes. It would be July nineteenth at eight AM. And so like I said, this will be the third year that they've done this event. They change the board every year. And this would be, this is the first year I'm on it, so because I'm here in Helena, I got tasked with coming to request a, a permit to do that event.
Is there a motion to, for me, for Coach Lockhart's, your, what? Ms. Davis motions to. Mr. Etherly, second, Mrs. Davis second's the motion? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Messina? Dr. Miller? Ms. Davis? Ms. Miller? Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, where did you get one of the permit applications from? Go ahead and get it filled out, although you've approved it.
I can, I can get anyone.
And I will make copies of it, thank you.
Of course, the, the next item was the, 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 the report because there may be less suggesting go to the minutes. Start on page three and go through page nineteen. And I don't know if you noted any necessary corrections to any of those. On the January twenty eighth meeting, you approved the minutes. You did a motion to escrow some funds based on tax liens and other items for the then proposed hospital sale. You authorized the mayor to sign an agreement with East Arkansas Regional Solid Waste Management District for three years with contract rates capped at forty five dollars, fifty dollars, fifty cents and fifty three dollars. You granted permission. You granted permission to request bids for trash carts and dumpsters. You granted a motion to begin the early stages of cleaning the Hernando Street ditch from, I believe it's DeSoto Street to Kelly Street. You granted permission to repair the Rango. And you did not pass the budget in that meeting, it was passed at another meeting. You went into executive session on the employee, took no action in the executive session. You came out of executive session and restored the employee after discretion of the mayor. That's the twenty eighth of January, meeting minutes. Yes, sir.
With the, I heard you talked about dumpsters. We can inform the council that we have gotten several dumpsters repaired, painted. Businesses are happy to receive their dumpsters. Weld them and paint them so it's not leaking on our new truck. So we got maybe ten dumpsters already repaired.
Yes, sir, correct. We got a, a guy welding and we're getting steel from Sibley Supply, Napa. And he's replacing the bottoms and reinforcing them, putting new feet on them and then painting them black. We requested the sign shop to create some reflective signs to go on as well. But we still do intend to seek the quotations or bids on prices of those things. It's going to be probably expensive to get them replaced. But as relates to the minutes from the twenty eighth, are we going to just go all in bulk? I'm going to the twenty ninth. On the twenty ninth, you met and passed the budget. Those are the minutes for the twenty ninth.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Well, then, on, wait, we got one other set on the fourth. That was an executive session. And no action was taken. And so that's the meeting on the fourth.
Is there a motion to approve these, all these minutes? Mr. St. Columbia moves to approve the minutes, is read and predicted. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly second's the motion. Is there any discussion? Might be no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Messina?
Yeah.
Five yes?
All right, moving right along, under the mayor, we've got the handbook. We got an agreement from Dr. Miller and Ms. Davis to assist us with the handbook. And we haven't met yet, so there's nothing to report on that, but we're just keeping it on the agenda so you know we're going to get that done. The next one is Hailman Authority Appointments. We have a type, we got Monica Manning, should be Monica Bennett. Name was submitted by mail to the mayor. And council has forty five days to accept or reject that nomination. Or it becomes filed in action. And so the mayor says it can wait till our meeting fourteen days from today, which is the eighteenth.
Looking at one of, one of the meetings packet here. Minutes on January the twenty eighth.
Yes, sir, Mr. St. Columbia, he said, Mr. St. Columbia requested that all names for airport commission be listed. That's all that's taken. That's it. No, there was no vote ever taken on. We are. So we are. Our next item is on page seventy two, seventy four, it's the A and P Commission Appointments. I don't believe that anything in there other than notes from the clerk telling you whose turn we're up. I'm just looking at the agenda page itself. But it's, it's, it's page seventy two if you want to turn over there, but you're not going to find much. I, I turned to page seventy two. There's an email from the clerk. Forwarding an email from Helen Haber, April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Asking to reappoint Matthew Harvey and reappoint Mr. Staley. That's on page seventy four. The, the email text is on page seventy four. Yes, sir. The A and P Commission asked you to reaffirm or reappoint Mr. Matthew Harvey and Ms. Mr. Staley.
I make that motion.
The motion has been made by Mr. St. Columbia to approve the A and P names were submitted by Helen Haber. Mr. Messina second's the motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. My memory is that we did one last year for Ms. Staley, who served a two-year term. And I don't think she's up for reappointment at this point. Do I need to confirm that with Ms. Ramsey in the minutes?
Correct, yeah.
That's right. And so Mr. Harvey is in a one-year slot, heels would be the, for renewal. And I think that's at May, when it actually comes up, so. I don't think there needs to be a reappointment of Ms. Staley, she's still in her current term right now.
You voted on it and they were approved, but we were going to put it in ordinance form like you have in the past. And the city attorney is going to prepare the ordinance.
Something that wasn't done, I don't, she said, oh, and I don't remember exactly what was something. So why don't we come back on the eighteenth and see if you got to create that?
Well, they have to rescind the motion, but, but see, my understanding was that once the initial ordinance is passed and the rest come from the bottom. We need to take a look at it, I guess, and make sure we understand, we are, we're all on the same page about.
So would you two rescind your motion so we can look at this one against me? Would you two, Mr. St. Columbia, Mr. Messina rescind your motion? Yes.
They want to study it, but Mr. Etherly, you can look up something for the March eighteen meeting.
All right, on the honorary street naming, we included that in the packet. The only thing I'll note, it's been in there before, but the only thing I'll note this time is that Waffle Chapel Church on Renee Street is asking that, you know, ran a honorary street name designation was basically means you put up a sign at the end of the street honoring a Reverend Goldsbury. Who's passed to that church for a long time and who's passed away. And at this point, we're just informing you, at a later point, we'll have more information. And let the people who are asking for it make a presentation. But we told them we would at least put you on notice that that request is coming. Let's see, page forty five is where it starts, Mr. St. Columbia. Yes, sir. Mr. St. Columbia, we're, we're not asking you to take any action on that tonight. Okay. Yes, sir. If you're ready, we'll go to the next item. Number five, the Helena Southern Porter Daughter has one vacant position. We have not gotten any names from Mr. John Edwards or who's the operating officer. Or Mr. Leroy Carter, who I believe was chairman of the board. And I suspect at some point soon we'll get those. And I mentioned that, so that you all might talk to whoever that you need to talk to on the way to this nomination process going forward. On item six, Job Description Committee would ask that we get two council members. One that I'm asking, Ms. Ashley Miller, if she would assist us with that. And another volunteer. And I ask because you've been concerned about us having those and wanting to include you in whatever we're doing to motivate all of them. we're doing to motivate all of the job descriptions for all the employees. And if it's just Ms. Maxine, that's fine, we'll get two, that'd be, be better. Ms. Maxine is agreeing to do that. All right, number seven, we got confirmation of airport commission appointments. Page seventy-five through seventy-nine is what is listed as, I don't know. I don't remember what's in there.
Yeah, we, we, uh, don't really deserve a time. And, uh, I have, uh, say this. At this point in time, we do not need to show that airport commission. I don't feel like we can make any changes at this time on the airport commission.
When term has expired. You don't get to, I didn't, so the people's terms expire. I said.
Yeah, so you may make a recommendation.
But, but you don't, but let me finish. It says, you don't get to replace. I nominate either vote above or down or forward. That's the way it reads. The city attorney stepped out. But Mr. Staley, am I correct? What's that? They don't get to. The people are appointed to the airport commission by virtue of the mayor making the nomination and the council approving it by three-fifths, I think it is. I have to give this name. Name.
I agree with you, man, you're proposing, you're going down on, I think.
The name, the name, you still don't get to approve. The names are here. Again, what was, what was approved by me, you just want to confirm that person by me because the rest of these people on this list need to be approved. Yeah, you, you, you know, when somebody, I mean, you say it's fine, but I'm telling you what the law says. So we can keep going around in circles, dancing slow or dancing fast. It's pretty much up to you. It has to change. And page seventy-six is not airport commission. I'm, I'm reading now, that's not the airport commission. Seventy-eight, page seventy-six is the howl, that's highlight of that. Please don't, don't, don't read that as opposed to the airport commission. Seventy-eight. And seventy-seven.
How did we get this in our packet?
Those were the names. What, what's that now?
How did we get this in our packet? Present Airport Commission twenty-twenty-five.
That's what, that's who.
That's where it's placed right now.
That wasn't in your packet.
Well, I don't know how we got it.
I gave it to you separately, but I, that.
You have one. You have one, don't you?
Joe, Joe wants you to tell them where you got it from.
Do what?
I said, you don't want Adrian to tell them where y'all got that list from.
I typed up this list.
I'm trying to help him to hear you.
Huh?
I'm trying to help Adrian to hear what you're saying.
I typed up this list here, that's what you're talking about.
Did, did, did the other councilwoman say?
How much did they have if they got it?
You say you typed it up, they should have it. Oh, so this had to get. We, we're not either, but, 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 but Ms. Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, Mr. Mr. Etherly and Ms. Miller do not have. You didn't, you know? I didn't. Probably the secret meetings you all had. That, that's what's wrong. Y'all talked about the secret meetings y'all had before that.
We're not on track.
Oh, we, you don't get to make that distinction. I'm shocked at you, you don't get to do that.
I'm not a lawyer, man.
I'm not either, the laws are my side. So, Mr. St. before you, for, Mr. City Council, explain to Mr. Etherly. I mean, Mr. Uh, St. Columbia, excuse Mr. Etherly. Because I'm, I'm thinking that he, he thinks that he gets the nomination. And we've been over this over and over again. Uh, you, you know, it, it's why it's called a city council. We're gonna, we're gonna get some clarification.
What's your question, Mayor, I'm sorry?
Mr. St. Columbia, he's gonna keep these people that's already on, that's the terms that expire. We're gonna keep on commission. And he, he, he gets, he said, I don't get to appoint anybody. He's gonna keep the way it is. This guy, this had a secret mission he got on the cable.
The man, uh, is, is your prerogative to appoint and what the council affirms?
So what happens if the council does not approve it?
Does not approve what?
The appointments.
There's no vacancy in public office. People continue to, to be there until they're, they're replaced.
Okay, so theoretically, if we voted and said, no, we don't approve it, then the people who are there will continue to stay there?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what, what's the likes, you, you, what, what's happened there that you decided to tell? Oh, when people's term expires, they just get to roll on and sit. I mean, so I don't think that's fair to keep a board the same that people's term expires. So, so what, I mean, so, so what is it, so what is this, this all the board? This is, there's no changes. I mean, you know, people have served. We have got a financial report, we have got anything from the people who serve on these boards. They turn, turn around, it's like, it's, it's kind of, when, when, when I make a motion or do something, it's kind of a hostile thing, like, no. Hey, I, I, I used to make. Someone has, when they ask something, I present, here you are, you kind of hostile toward it. Like, no, I think, I think it's not fair to people who want to serve on this airport commission that you come in and tell me no, saying there's no reason why. Madam Clerk, have we received any financial records from the airport commission? We don't know what the airport commission does with finance or anything. We don't know, we don't get any information about who's the ready to land out to or none of that, do we? Do we see any revenue from airport?
No, sir, you don't see.
So I'm saying now, and it's like, oh, we're gonna nominate. That's like saying, oh, if nobody votes or nobody, I'm not against it. I think it's unfair that you see it, that, oh, we're just gonna leave it. Why, if your terms expire? So it's one of these things, oh, I got you. These are the games, or this, I mean. One of the terms expire, I don't need somebody. I swore me, they still had service. So.
Okay, if I understand, and this is, this is what I'm trying to sort of work through. The way this is set up, every five, four, three, two, whatever years, somebody's term expires, correct? At the time that that term expires, then does the mayor appoint the new person for the person whose term expires?
The mayor nominates for you all to confirm.
Okay, so let's say this go around, we understand that there is one person that is up to the mayor's discretion to replace. After this, each, the next person who is due to expire, then the mayor would appoint the new person, or does the commission appoint the new person? How does that work?
It's the mayor's prerogative. The mayor's prerogative, but he's supposed to bring the person before this board.
Okay. So this time, as of right now, he would have one appointment, right? Or the one person he could recommend and whatever. Then the next go-round, he could appoint or recommend another person, right?
Yes, ma'am. He has the authority to, it comes to the mayor first, for the mayor to, to, uh, bring him towards his body.
Okay, so then, as of right now, he has one appointment or one.
I don't know how many times are expired at this point. Now, one of the things that the airport commission is not doing, especially in light of the Freedom of Information Act, they should have, all the finances should have, all the, all of those things, and the recordings of every meeting, because Freedom of Information Act, the clerk should have. I see Mr. Shiffler hand in the back, but they should, the clerk should have a copy of all that, and she says she does not.
Whatever I do, you all will tell me, whatever I say, it's like, oh, Miss Shiffler, I recognize you just a moment. But I think whatever I say, Mr. St. Columbia has this agenda that, oh, we're gonna shut everything you asked for down. This will be a kind of, you know, like, it's like, whatever I'm asking for. So no, but if it's to embarrass, this is, this is yes. I submit these names, and I think it's unfair to the people that we consider, we keep the same old, like, you all circled to vote your conscience. Every time I ask or say some, it's like, let me get, let me get a punch under your throat. Mr. St. Columbia seems to think that he controls the city council. When he says goes, because it's like, he can be up to get absolutely joy. Sometimes it looks to be true. When people solicit to vote, none of this is one person. So I did make one point, is three vacancies. Every, if you look at your sheet, you'll see when everybody's term expired. So if you look at your package, you'll see the terms expire. And that, that's what has us here, only term is not expired, it's been support Monday.
The relevant statute that you all discussed, and it's Arkansas Code, under T A D S, section fourteen, three fifty-nine, one oh five. And it says, the commissions shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by three-fourth vote of the elected and qualified members of the city council. And in B two, it says, on expiration of their respective terms, the successor shall be appointed by the mayor subject to approval of the city council, a five-year term.
So you, you have names that we have submitted. I would like them to be for full consideration. So.
How many different, um, mayor terms have passed that there hasn't been a change of the commission?
I don't, I don't know, but when I was on the city council, that was never given to us. So when they, when, when I, when, when this was, when this was gave to me, I took, I acted on it. And I think that on several things that weren't brought to the city council, it's like, their financial reports has not been brought. So I think that that's now, when I got this, I mean, it's easy to put people on here that who wants to serve. Everybody who I asked, they're willing, ready to serve. And if they know their term had expired, they didn't come, they didn't come to the city council or to the former mayors and say, hey, my term expired, I would like to continue serving, so it could come up to a vote. They just, they just stayed like, oh, when I saw it, I acted on it.
I think the only concern I have, and this is just me, is that for all of those terms, we had a commission that theoretically could have just walked off the commission and not served, not done anything for the airport, not, I mean, they could have just said, my term's up. But they continued to serve the community. They continued to do what was needed for the airport as far as I, I understand. I don't understand why, you know, we could not ask them to provide whatever paperwork, financials, reports, whatever else going forward. You have your one appointment, allow them to continue to serve, and then as they roll off, then appoint at that time, I mean.
So you, so you can't reappoint.
I mean, reappoint within the past five years, Madam Clerk. So, so all five, all of their terms will be expired?
If all are expired, I said, would, this misses Monday. So everybody's term has expired, except Mrs. For Monday. So that, that's, that was, that brought us here.
So they were all, the other commissioners, they were all prior to her? They were all there before her?
Yes. That was the last appointment we got, when I was on the city council, she was the last person they brought to. And it's kind of passed, they know it, it's decided. I don't, I don't know who this Monday replaced, but when it came up, somebody came along like, we got support, Mrs. For Monday, we all, I knew this Monday.
She replaced Mr. Tony.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Tony Drew has left, moved to Hot Springs, and that's who she replaced. Just to reset the, the, the facts. On November the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, city clerk, Sandra Ramsey, sent Mayor Franklin an email that addressed the local ordinance on how you appoint people to the airport commission, outlining that there were five members, and the term then started at one year, two year, three year, four year, five years. But they all served five years and been rolling off one every year, the way it worked in theory. And she said that the current people at that time, including Mr. Eddie Shiffler, who's an attorney and a pilot, and was appointed in two thousand and eight. For Monday, who's a pilot, appointed in twenty-twenty. John King the third, a pilot, appointed March the fourth of two, two thousand and nine. She couldn't find when brothers, who's the airport manager, and Mr. Joe Howe, who's the current treasurer, were appointed, nothing found in the minutes from two thousand and six to the present to indicate when they were appointed. And she did not know whether they were pilots. And the law requires that you have at least one pilot out of the five. But she sees several of them in the past.
Sir, may I say, I believe all the people who are pilots except, uh, before, and she's getting her pilot's license, I believe. I believe she's getting her license, so they're all, most all of them are pilots.
Yes, sir, I, I was reading from an email that Ms. Ramsey sent to the mayor. Send your packet on page seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Yes, sir. As practical, mine would take five votes for you all to affirm, you know, the.
Why don't you invite them to come and talk to us?
You, you, you invited them, and they have not showed up the last.
I haven't invited anybody.
It's nothing you missed, the last week, didn't he say he want them to come and speak?
Sir, you have invited.
That's, that's your question. I said.
Mr. Howard here, uh, who's one of, he wants to say anything, you.
So Mr. Shiffler. Mr. Shiffler said.
Sure, so it's Mr. Riddell.
Yeah.
Mr. Shiffler's here, I think.
Mr. Riddell is here as well. Confirmed him, because I swore me, he hadn't served yet.
Sir.
Mr. Riddell is here.
Okay.
And he, I, I, I.
I didn't see him out there.
Yeah, but I swore me, and you had to confirm. Won't you swear, Mr. Riddell, let me, won't you, won't you vote to, to him say?
I don't know.
But, but I mean, both brothers' term expired. It's, yeah, Mr. Riddell. Excuse me? That's what I was talking about, do you want to speak, you speak loud, so we all can hear, I want to be in the conversation as well. So.
Certainly, the mayor just, the mayor just said he's, he's. So, the mayor just, the mayor just said he's, he's sworn in Mr. Riddell, he's asking you all to confirm him now. And so that's, that's what discussing, he was asking, and you said you wanted Mr. Riddell to speak.
So, Buck Brothers' term expired, Mr. Riddell is forty, has not served yet, month, what, month three, almost month three?
Are you asking him to come speak?
No, no, can we, can we confirm it? Buck Brothers' term expired, Riddell's expired?
The floor is about Mr. Riddell at this point, and the mayor says he's nominating.
Mr. Shiffler.
And he's, uh, Mr. St. Columbia. Let's pause for a second. Let's, let's pause for a second. As relation order, the rules that you wanted to follow, the missing rules, you have a discussion at this point relating to Mr. Riddell. The mayor has one floor, you all to take action. So before we go to Mr. Shiffler, it would be a pleasure to have Mr. Shiffler and Mr. Howe, who are both here. But the topic at this point is Mr. Riddell. You just said you wanted to hear him, and what mayor said, would you all take some action relating to him? The statute I read to you said the mayor nominates, he appoints, and you all confirm by three-fourth vote. Mayor, you said you want to hear from Mr. Riddell. Now, Mr. St. Columbia, you said you want to hear from Mr. Riddell. You said that two minutes ago. Now, let's pause. Either you all want to be, listen, it's time out for games, I understand.
Be reasonable about all of you.
Don't point your finger at me, the thing I'm telling you is time out for games. The thing I'm trying to tell you is this, Mr. St. Columbia, either you're gonna give Mr. Riddell opportunity to speak, and you're here, and vote him up or down, or go forward, but this block game machine, this is simple, either you're gonna firm him, or you're not. It's simple. Mr. Riddell?
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yeah, I was asked by the mayor to serve on the Airport Commission, Holland West Town Airport Commission. I have been a pilot since, uh, for probably thirty years. I've got thirty years, twenty, twenty-eight years of ag flying experience. Been on an airport my whole life, grew up out there. Um, first job was mowing that place, and I would like the back of my hand, and I'd like to serve. Um, you know, the mayor asked me to serve, and he's, he appointed me. Um, I've already been sworn in, so it's up to you guys to, um, either approve it or not approve it. But I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate them.
I mean, you said it was cool, man, go ahead.
It's Paul Riddell. But I appreciate you listening, thank y'all.
So Mr. Riddell was a pet, thanks to Mr. Buck Brothers, is there a motion, is there a second to confirm?
Who, who were the individuals who had no record of, of appointment?
The brothers and Howe, according to the email.
Right.
The Buck Brothers and John Joe Howe. So before two thousand six, who am I guessing? He said, no, no record, plus two thousand six, all right, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think it's necessary that we hear from the chairman of the, of the Airport Commission, and that is Eddie Shiffler, he's the chairman.
I'm wanting, um, appoint Mr. Paul Riddell.
Miss Davis, to, for Mr. Paul Riddell to replace Mr. Buck Brothers, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ethely, second is the motion? So Mr. St. Columbia already told Mr. Messina, don't. So, so in a, in a discussion.
The only discussion that I have is this. The only discussion that I have is this. I understand that it is the mayor's discretion to appoint someone he wants. I personally don't have anything against Mr. Riddell, I don't know Mr. Riddell. The only objection I had was to a total change of the entire commission. That was the only thing I had some concerns about.
This man, I, 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 I understand, uh, you know, you know, St. Columbia said you all had the vote, so we'll see how this rolls, so, Mr. St. Columbia said he's in charge, may I tell you how to roll?
Mayor, I really wish you would not do.
Well.
I really wish you wouldn't do that.
That these people's names have been submitted, and I submitted, to me, what you all telling me is, we don't, it, it's like, the votes, every, I'm not gonna go into detail with that, but the, there's a motion, and a second, the clerk is gonna call the roll. So we'll see how this goes.
Miss Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
No.
Dr. Miller is absent. Mr. Messina?
No.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's three yeses, two no's, one eh.
Were there doing anything else on Airport Commission, or you're not just growing along?
No, it takes three, four, it takes five of them.
Chairman of the Airport Commission here, and you don't want to hear from him?
It's, it's up to, it's, it's up to you.
Well, we've asked you to bring him up, and you won't do it.
I didn't say I wouldn't do.
Well, do it then, yeah.
If you could remember to stay woke, I will. See, I don't take me to, Mr. Shiffler, he won't hear from me, but it's unfair to me, but I, but, you know, I, I, I'm trying not to, but the, with the public, see where we are.
Good evening. Uh, I want to disagree with you, Madam Clerk, mayor, the airport financial records are part of the city's audit every year, and I thought y'all got copies.
Shiffler was not, he said, she don't have a copy of the records in her office.
No, I think you were outside, and the mayor asked, mayor, you tell me wrong, did you look at the city clerk, say, have you ever got any financial records from the airport? Right, right. And I'm disputing that, because the financial records are part of the city's audit every year.
That's, that's not the same, what she's saying is she didn't have a copy in her office.
No.
Mr. Shiffler, does she have a copy in the office?
Yeah, that's the part of the audit, if you.
No, 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 I'm outside of the audit.
Let me finish my point.
Does she have a copy in the office?
It's, I assume she's got the city audit in her office every year, do you?
Mr. Shiffler, there's a marked distinct difference between, if someone F Y I her for a copy of your records, would they be able to get a copy of your records from her office? That's the question that I was addressing, you said, is it physically in her? Is it not physically in her?
All due respect, the mayor asked her, and I'm just trying to point to the record, because the mayor asked her if she have any financial records from the airport, and I'm saying they're part of, part of the audit that the auditors do every year.
I'm saying it does audit, and I don't dispute you on that, that's audit every year. But the question that the mayor had asked me earlier, before I walked out, about the physical location, are there any, if a citizen came, as a matter of fact, I want to see the airport records, could they give? The answer is no. They can get it, ah, gain the minutes, they can't get the other things, and that's what the mayor was addressing to me. I don't know what happened when I walked out of the room, but that's why I was.
That wasn't the address that he had to matter.
I'm saying, but my question specifically to the clerk was, do you have a physical copy of the financial records and of the minutes? That's, that's all I was asking. Go ahead, Mr. Shiffler, I've interrupted you quite, and I apologize, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make it clear that the, the financial records are part of the audit, legislative audit there. And mayor, you came to the Airport Commission meeting in December, and we had part of our financial records there, and I personally, you recall, I stopped you out on the street in January, and asked to come back again, and you said you'd be there, but then you had, I guess, a municipal league, uh, seminar or something else, you told me you couldn't, didn't make it. So I did.
You did.
Okay, you're, I mean, you're always, well.
Any more questions, Mr. Shiffler?
Uh. An indication that there's two members of your board who have no record of being appointed. Uh, i- is this correct, or any records of those two individuals?
The city have those records, so, but where the records were for the Airport Commission, there was a hanger fire in two thousand and ten, and a lot of historic records ended up in that. But the, the clerk was able to get when I was appointed, because she looked at the city council minutes. If there is any council minutes, then they're going to have records of showing, uh, who all had been appointed, when it was.
I was back as far as two thousand and six, when we consolidated, I'm back, uh, then further back, I didn't have time.
So there are records, Mr. Ethely, of the appointments, it's just a question going back and looking. And I, if I may comment one other, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because Chief of Staff Alley talked about in Port Authority, that he was expected to have recommendations from Mr. Edwards, Chairman Carter, but nobody has called or asked me for any input as chairman of the commission of any replacements. I'm, I'm here tonight, because, uh, I'm sorry, mayor.
The mayor said to me, he didn't, he didn't say he has to. Uh, all the bills are different, and some of them say that you, that the body recommends to the mayor, and the mayor recommends, and some say, all right, the mayor recommends.
Yeah.
And he was, he was saying that the statute, he called, it didn't say for the port authority, that he has to, that's what he was just telling.
I'm just commenting, and it kind of confused me when I heard the chief of staff say, well, be ready for hearing from Mr. Edwards and Chairman Carter for replacements or suggestions, and nobody's asked, nobody, let me finish my point, nobody's asked the commission for recommendations on it. Now, I became chairman, uh, after Mr. Brune had expired, I've been for finishing up, uh, five years as chairman.
To, to, that, each board is different, it doesn't say that I have to ask you, the House thought the board, they, like, like the A and P mentioned, they nominate within, the House thought the board, they send their recommendation to mayor's office, the mayor presented to the city council, the council votes like Mrs. B. The council gets, the, the board sends that to me, I send it to the council, they vote that person up and down, and then send it with you all.
I'm just saying, it was confusing to me to hear Chief of Staff say, well, be ready for some recommendations from that, uh, port authority.
So, you, you, your board didn't say that.
Yeah, well, I guess the other thing that confuses me is, I don't think you have the legal authority to swear him by a minute until he's confirmed. And you can tell that, if you can swear him, you swore him to write, then, and he hasn't served yet, well, I don't think the swearing in should be placed until after the council has confirmed. Ne- negative, it's the same, you get to, well, person, you, you get to make a nomination, appointment, but, but the council gets to approve it, and I don't think it's proper to swear somebody in until the council confirms. I defer to the city.
Legally, until they're confirmed, they're not confirmed, so that, not officer until they confirm.
Cart before horse, so I just wanted to talk to you about the airport itself. So right now, we are in the process of receiving a FAA airport improvement grant to repair part of the area and to provide more security. The wait, we're waiting for the contractors to, uh, let the bids on that, and I appreciate Mr. Valley's cooperation, because I've talked to him. There was a contractor that was the successful bidder, and then they merged, changed names. FAA wanted the city's blessing to, uh, correct that, and that, uh, project was, is ongoing now. To me, uh, it would be helpful to keep the existing board on intact to finish through, uh, that project. And then also, um, we're in the process of trying to re-negotiate leases of some of the tenants out there, and we need to get through that. Um, and I'll say this, that it is a complicated and specialized, um, position in, in dealing with making sure that you're complying with the FAA regulations. They send information or requests all the time to follow through with what needs to be done. I don't have any doubt that Mr. Riddell could be able to do that, but I, I think as it is going now with the existing ongoing, uh, project there, and leases that are up for renewal, it would be good to continue on the same group, and we can give you a recommendation. So you talked about the politics of it, well, that's what we all are doing, you're nominating, and the council's not approving, it didn't pass, and you can do that time and time again, but I think it would be good to have peace and bring people together to work through it and come up with some order, uh, transition on it, be glad to do with you, work with you on that. Um, and I guess let me make this clear, the, the airport and the revenue that's generated in the airport is supposed to stay with the airport according to the statute. And, and mayor, did, did you rent the armory out to a group? So those funds need to be turned over to the Airport Commission, because the money that specifically by the statute says derived from the airport needs to stay with the airport. The airport in the past has cooperated, the water company has the solar panels out there, and the airport leased part of the grounds for the water company, had that solar panel project, which, uh, for water company on there. Pardon me? You ask a question, I'll answer it.
I'll answer the question.
You were commenting, and I didn't hear your comment.
No, it wasn't.
Did you say some words?
I said some words, it wasn't.
Okay, well, I, I thought I had the, here to answer questions.
No, but I would see with you.
Okay, you can open.
You can hear what I said, so no more answering what I said.
That's why I was asking you to repeat it.
That's why I just responded to you.
Okay. So I'm here to ask you or answer. Did somebody?
Is the board objecting to Mr. Riddell?
The board doesn't have a position on that. The, the board would like for the city to do the proper procedure. So we don't have.
This proper season, mayor nominates, and the city council.
And it, it, it's tonight, so it, then there's nothing that was accomplished, and the prison commission will continue to serve, as you pointed out, there's no vacancies.
I'm saying.
I, I just was here because somebody had.
For the, for the record, the mayor nominates, the council confirms, and he is, he is, uh, I, I think that we're kicking this, kicking this horse, we're kicking this horse. Uh, Riddell was not approved, uh, I think the board heard from Shiffler, I must say Columbia and Mr. Messina want to hear from you, but they haven't asked you any questions. Do I have anything else you all want to hear from Mr. Shiffler?
I have no other question.
You have an next one? Okay.
I, I'll say this, we have a good cohesive group. Um, Ms. Monday, who is the junior member here, has added youth and vitality, and is a participant in the, uh, Black Pilots of Arkansas Thunderbird chapter, and we host educational events several times through her shepherding and invitation, the pilots from all over Arkansas and the mid-south have come, she has a dynamic to it. Mr. John King, who's a farmer, is overseeing a project to install an irrigation well, which would help improve the yield for the farmland, which is revenues, uh, for the airport, and Mr. Brothers is the airport manager, and goes out there, the air, the taxiway lights, the pappy lights, things that need to be done, he helps, uh, look at those, but I wish that. uh, look at those. But I wish that here you call me and we can have input like we, uh, and you're welcome to come to the, the next meeting. And if you want us to send you financial statements, we'll be happy to send you those financial statements. I've never received a request. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I have heard one issue that needs to be addressed. And it is, before we get to politics of the government and the confirmation, there's a legal issue that keeps nagging at me and there's no documentation of two people being appointed. And Mr. Valley's statement about the law, I totally agree with. If you're not replaced, you continue to serve, legally continue to serve. But if you can't show documentation of your appointment, you have two people on the commission. But no matter whether they were lawfully appointed or not, if we can't justify it or show documentation, there are two people who can't legally serve because there's no proof that they were ever appointed. And so I think it needs to be addressed, uh, to, to, no matter what happens, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be some documentation of their.
The issue with those two appointments at this point would be every law, every ordinance and everything that existed from the former city of Helena went away, uh, other than those that the city council adopted, uh, during the December thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty oh five meeting. And the, because on the day the city of Helena was Helena, has had records that the people were appointed. If no one was ever appointed, the people were not, are not properly on the board. So they wouldn't have that status. Statute is if you put in a position, uh, you continue until you, you, you have a successor field. But if the city clerk's saying that there's no, no record of Mr. Brothers being on the commission, then he's, he hasn't been put on the commission by the city. Any other person that hasn't been put on the commission would fall on the same, uh, level.
Well, no, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a everybody. The, 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 the legal issue is the people who were properly appointed, if they never get replaced, they continue to serve law. You, you could, you could decide in two, in another year that you don't want to file for their position. And if nobody else files, you can legally hold it in the city council seat. Cause the law doesn't have a vague record as a vacancy, you know? But if they were ever appointed to the body, then they've never lawfully been there. So they can't continue to serve because they've never served. And so those two need to be, either need to find documentation or if there's no documentation, then they can't. There was two gentlemen on the, on the body. I, it was in the email.
That's on page seven eight and then.
I said, Paul, you replaced both brothers with Paul Riddell, right?
No.
Yeah, both brothers and Mr. How.
Okay. So yeah.
The page seventy-nine says, Joe How, current treasurer, nothing found in the minutes from two thousand and six to present, indicate he was ever appointed. Uh, and it says both bros.
Excuse me, referring to both of them.
Yeah, both of them.
At the same time.
Both brothers.
Then there needs to be some documentation of their appointment in order for them to serve.
I need to go back and look prior to two thousand and six in the Helena and the West Helena ordinance books to see if I can find any appointment.
Well, the Helena book would be irrelevant because.
I would think what happened is they were appointed in Helena, but they didn't carry off.
Right. Helena no longer exists.
Well, many times. That's the gap indirect.
Well, many times we look at Helena as having consumed West Helena, legally, West Helena consumed Helena. So we market ourselves as Helena on A and P and other things, but, uh, West Helena actually is a corporation consumed Helena. And Helena ordinances seeks to exist December thirtieth, two thousand and five.
So I think, I think that needs to be addressed first.
All right. Can we, we, we're seven twenty-eight and I got a six o'clock flight, eight o'clock, I believe. Oh, okay. Long, long we got that understanding. So I, I, I gotta fly. I gotta be, I gotta be in Memphis by four. So question is this. So these people, two people, no rec can be found. So can they legally?
I think the clerk, if they don't, she needs to go back to two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, they wouldn't. They wouldn't. With Shiffler, you, as city attorney, everything for Helena seeks to exist on December thirtieth, two thousand and five. If they were appointed by the city of Helena to the airport commission, then that appointment is, is not valid if they were not reappointed. Now, it will still be up to the mayor to nominate and the city council to confirm by three, four vote.
So. So we need to what?
But this man clerk can look back on the records from two thousand and six forward.
You, you, you want to look?
But here's a practical issue. Airport commission. You have, you have people that's been on the board for, for, for twenty years and airport commission has a degree of autonomy. At the same time, all the people should have the opportunity to, to serve. That the city council, other Missalk Columbia, Missalk Columbia city council has changed every seat over that same time period. So if one thing is, uh, I think the council needs to take a study opposed to this and look at it. But as city attorney, I don't, I think you have three people that are, that are, are properly appointed. You have two that are not been appointed. That's what the information I have before me right now. I just gave a little thing. It's up to you all what to do.
There ain't anything else. But you got two vacancies because there's no record for two people to serve. So if you leave it alone, the two people that, that, that you want.
Missalk Columbia.
All right. All right. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Valley, the horse is dead. Can we go on please?
Yes.
Um, the police chief is here as well as our water superintendent. And in this brief amount of time we have left, I would think so we could do the police chief's request, uh, at page eighty as a grant, ordinance, a resolution on page eighty. I believe what's happened is that they received a grant to purchase certain items. Um, and we need this, uh, resolution passed authorizing that purchase. And the resolution waiving competitive bidding and coins with Arkansas Code and Annuitator six fourteen, today, drill three, authorizing the man into contract to purchase certain property for the city of Helena, West Helena for other related purposes. And it's police radios and computers for the vehicles, the right chief. And this is being paid by a grant from the DRA. And, uh, the toll shall not exceed fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cent on this particular purchase. But I thought the grant was about seventy-three thousand. So man, this number, what's it, what's you want the number to be? The seventy-three thousand?
Well, the, the, we're talking two things. The, the seventy-three thousand, city council, cause you have received the grant, it has not been appropriated. You all need to appropriate the, the, the grant so that they can have their authority to spend it. The second thing is a waiver of competitive bidding waiting to fifty-nine thousand that's there. Those two actions, this, this, uh, uh, they're not spending the entire seventy-three thousand tonight. The, the two invoices I had was for fifty-nine thousand. What's the other, what's the other fourteen thousand?
They separated voice this afternoon for thirteen thousand, seven forty-seven for tasers. So that'll take up the seventy-three thousand with the exception of three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This, this is brass money.
It's grand money.
It, it's, it's no, it's not coming out of our treasury.
There's not general funds. The money is coming to the city for specific purposes of, well, listed in the grant. So it'll all be spent in consistent with what we applied for. And it's for police department equipment.
But before it can be spent, it has to be appropriated. And so the thing I was saying is you're receiving seventy-three thousand. City council has to appropriate that money for them to be able to spend it. The first step. And he's actually the way competitive business, the second step, to spend it. So the first step is, as you, you acknowledged that you receive seventy-three thousand, a high amount of dollars, chief of staff just there. And you all are moving to appropriate that money for the police department to spend it. So the motion needs to be to, to accept the grant and appropriate the full amount of the grant and the amount of, how much does the chief staff?
I would just say seventy-four thousand. It's seventy-three thousand dollars change. I don't have the exact number here, so I thought it was in this document.
Right. So the city needs to appropriate the money before they can spend it. Cause the mayor and the chief of, chief police cannot spend any money that hadn't been appropriated. But this is grant. Not coming from your general funds, coming from a third party.
New money coming in.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So is there a motion to appropriate the grant?
Davis taking the motion. Man, in discussion, man, call the room.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis, Ms. Miller, Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
I had a resolution prepared that, that was for fifty-nine thousand, but there's another thirteen thousand, uh.
Yes, sir. So we'll change the not exceed to seventy-four thousand.
Right. That's, I was.
Seventy-four thousand?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And we add the proper language to it. Uh, compared to building, no longer has to be waived by, or initially can be waived by resolution now. So if there's a motion to approve the resolution, we're compared to building.
Mr. Ethely moves to move resolution of board, Ms. Davis taking the motion again. Somebody wants to talk about it, man, but the other.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
The Seena?
Yeah.
Five yes.
Um, so, Mr. Chief, what did he say? Okay. We have Mr. Said Rose here, uh, who's our water superintendent. And we've got several things listed here. Um, on page one oh seven, there's an invoice for Quarterbomb Plumbing for about ninety-two hundred dollars plus a thousand.
What page did you last?
One hundred and seven. Quarterbomb Plumbing, ninety-one hundred, eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Activity log shows that there's twenty-three hours on Beach, uh, January fifteenth, sixteenth and seventh. And Beach Street is ongoing, does not resolve.
Any estimation of how much more time?
I didn't hear you. Oh, estimation on, on how long Beach Street is going to take? He come.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we're looking to complete repairs, hopefully by the end of this month. We're just trying to work on clearing that entire line that's going all the way to York Street. And so we can't complete the repairs there until we get the line completely flowing. So that's been, uh, hold up. But there is a new sewer line, twenty foot section in that hole and a new water line as well. So we're just not complete yet, but we're getting there.
And then your packet, there's a couple of pictures of Beach Street. I, I saw on, on page one oh one, you can kind of get a glimpse of it. They're on copper nail as well, one oh two and one oh three and four. But it's a big hole on Beach Street, really big. And the photo on one oh five, it shows the leak that we talked about, Park Street. That's actually coming down to two hundred block of Co-Anthon. Uh, so they repaired that on a Sunday. I told you in the last meeting, this picture here, just like something glazed. Yeah, that was Park Street that was leaking. Uh, we've been getting some complaints from customers or concerns from customers with water meter reading irregularities. And when I say reading irregularities, it's, I'm saying malfunction or malfunction by the, the machine, the, the, the water meter, not our water meter person doing anything, but that it's not registered properly. It's my understanding that we're getting, uh, texts in to look at those. Cause we've had several, somewhere between, I'd say five, twenty people who have asserted that they don't have a leak and the, the sudden, uh, spurts or whatever you call it, usage, uh, is not justified. And so we're trying to see what's going on with those meters. Cause a person will go from, uh, fifteen hundred gallons to fifteen thousand gallons of usage from one month to the next, uh, with no visible leaks, the toilet not leaking, the plumber's checked it and all those things. And so it's kind of difficult for us to pinpoint what it is. Uh, what we've done from a policy standpoint is ask them to continue to pay the average water bill while we try to reserve, resolve the issue. We're not charging late fees or penalties until we get it figured out. If we get it figured out and it's not the city's responsibility, we'll work out some type of payment plan with those people. Uh, and for the responsibility, reduce the bill by the fact that it would be improperly charged. So that's what we're doing with those customers.
We also.
Yeah. When one is malfunction, unless Mr. Rose is speaking from the back, when the final one is malfunctioning, uh, the place. Yes, sir. As the funds become available. As the funds become available.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, sir.
You can't pay it if you don't have it.
Mr. St. 9,982 dollars and twenty-seven cents as the funds are coming together. Ms. Davis takes the motion. Any discussion? That'll call the room.
Mr. Messina?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Five yes.
We've got, we've got about a nine million dollar income, the city does. And we've got about three million in debt. Hey, we, we need to have a meeting that we can sit and discuss how we're going to handle this, what we're going to do to pay off these bills, the debt. I think that we need to start looking into paying our bills, paying our bills and a way of getting it done. I'm through.
But it seems like the first thing you want to do is set pay our bills, you know, when you ran for reelection, because I ran from here and we were strapped from cash and all the things when I took office, you know how bad it was. So we're going to check this work we started. It's like, love you, bitch, I know this, but with Helena, we're mighty mad. You was here. You made a little oldness with this, this dead network. I hadn't seen you come up with a plan to get Helena, when Helena was sinking alone. And then these last people were trying to project. And you had not done that to, to, to show us how we can get out of there. The only thing you do is say, can you pay your bills and, and that, that, and some of the reasons why people are not coming to this meeting is because they're here in these meetings.
Excuse, excuse. Can I, can I get some, uh, I'm talking about bills. Can I get some, I want some clarification from the city council about some rental equipment that you guys rented some equipment from contractors, um, for the landfill, uh, cause equipment was breaking down. And so since we've replaced the equipment in the landfill, but now, uh, the equipment has continued to be in renting, but now it's paid, it's been paid out of the general fund. I want to know if the city council, you, you guys need to approve the money for the general fund. The two funds is two separate sources of revenue. So when you approve the, the appropriations in, in the landfill, you were using landfill revenues. Landfill revenues can't be used to support general operations. So since we're paying
So since we're paying for it now out of the general fund, I want to know if the city council wants to approve those appropriations so we can make the payments for the, for rental, for renting the equipment using land, using general funds? No. I know the landfill has their own, has their own equipment.
So why are we still?
Yeah.
I don't know.
If, if you go a little bit to parks, if you go a little bit to these houses, they're torn down. You got to continue to go and sit in the desk. Um, we have, council members, people are asking, I need these houses torn down, pimped as fuck. That's what we do over there to give fire, I said. Yeah, I bet we all were that happy that's how we got this deal. Uh, with some people here today saying, I'm, I'm looking at these, that's up to you all.
Is there budget appropriation for it? I mean.
I, I, I didn't realize what it was being used. And we had, we'd been using it last year. And I, I think we owe about two hundred thousand dollars on it right now, a little over two hundred thousand.
I thought that Mr. Wilson was working on grants and funding and all of that. That would address all of that.
That was for the landfill.
The Ms. Mills is looking at the, at the, we have a city support equipment for our department. To my knowledge, I didn't know that the brother was that high or I'm pretty sure this, I would have been, it would have been nicely told.
I didn't know. I asked.
What, what, what wrong is that? What are you talking about?
Have, uh, I think excavators, sixty-seven hundred dollars a month. Those are just like three, three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars a month.
And you said that's two hundred thousand?
We're behind two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, oh.
Equipment rental and whatever.
The equipment that was moved from the landfill to the street department that we're doing the houses with and cleaning the ditches, it has to be paid for out of the general fund. It can't be paid for out of the street fund in there. It goes back through like, I think, twenty-three, that there are some bills that haven't been paid yet. So we just need to catch up on the central Arkansas contractors' invoice.
I mean, I would think that in light of everything else that we are struggling to pay, that any bill for house cleaning and removal and whatever, that would go, if at all, to the way back of the line. I would think that we would need to clear up some of the other bills that we have.
My thing is that, do you want to continue forward?
Do we want?
Do you want to continue moving forward with the rental? That's, that's what I'm trying.
Yeah, we have, um, didn't you say you have our own equipment?
Well, that's at the landfill. Yeah.
You're talking about paying two bills or you're talking about?
Talking about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars that's passed them. And.
And continuing.
And continuing on bill of about thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I say this, it's simple to me. If there's no budget appropriation, then there's no money for it.
As I've been saying for years, and the mayor said, uh, the city cannot engage in deficit spending. And we keep spiraling, spiraling, spiraling. He was here before this, my. I've asked the city council and the mayor's past, the city council president, to address the issue so we can resolve the issue. I've asked privately the mayor, the city clerk, the city treasurer, to start dealing with some plan. And I've asked this body publicly to deal, deal with it. I, I think the issue is we can't continue to go the way we've been going. And when the city should not have any evidence of indebtedness beyond the money that you have. And so you all do need a plan, you need to resolve it. Uh, the issue is going towards the summer, we need to curtail spending so that the, you can pay off your past due debts. I've advised privately, and I want to say it publicly, uh, because I don't want it to be said, the city attorney didn't tell us.
If you all say, hey, we don't stop that, let's put it out here that, let's stop it. So y'all want to read it, make the motion so we, we, you know, I'm, I'm with, I'm with whatever you all agree. So, so can I get a motion, Mr. St. Columbia?
Sure.
Man, I don't need a motion to stop it. I mean, if you want to. I mean, I guess, what I'm saying is I don't need a motion to stop. I just need, if y'all want to continue it, I guess you would need a motion.
It was a conversation between you.
Because you, because you haven't done it in the first place.
And that was a conversation to be, before we got here, I was ready to appreciate that, so I would know. We're here. And I think that's some of the problems in the city, that, you know, a lot, a lot of things, the other there, a lot of things I don't get to see or get to know about, their chest, their, their, their things that I don't know. But it's up to you all. This is not the place.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The equipment that we're using to tear down these houses, is that landfill equipment? Is that what you're telling me?
No.
It's not landfill equipment. We need to quit tearing down houses and start paying a bill. We need to cut out a lot of stuff that we're having to do. And, and you don't have to, you can't spend what you don't have. And you got to cut out something, pay the good bill, you got to get the bills down. Go back and look at some of these jobs and some of these things that we're doing, can't afford them.
I like that you can sit here and tell me to go look at some of these jobs. It's good for you to be cutting these jobs. Everybody, everybody can do the work.
Can't keep spending.
Anything else?
Yes, I want to weigh in. I have one question. This doesn't cost us anything. Uh, Mayor Valley and I went out and checked the property out there on Midland Heights and Valley Drive. Several pictures, it was going to state of Arkansas, give us a.
It's on page fifty-two.
On page fifty, what, what's going to happen?
That's your resolution, asking the state to take care of it.
Are you there, send him a resolution?
Well, y'all didn't adopt it yet. On the doctors before, your folks said it moved to a turn, they moved it on.
What I'm saying, you want to use a W resolution to ask the state to do that?
Yeah, we need to adopt a resolution, so.
Is that your motion?
I'm making motion, we adopt a resolution.
Is that a second?
Property at Midland Heights and Valley Drive, Mr. Valley and I, Mr. Valley took pictures of.
Yes, sir. It's in your packet with pictures.
Second.